6:01, I'm calling to order the Fountain City Council meeting for January 24th, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Prodomestis?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Corey?
Here.
Councilmember Rick?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan? All seven members present.
Thank you very much. I ask you all to take a moment, please, and join me for a moment of silence for our Fountain Fire Department, who had a family lost in the last couple of weeks, and we'd just like to remember that. Thank you very much. That takes us to item 4.1, Presentations. Bless you. We have the South Powers Boulevard presentation from Mr. Asher, Wilson, and Company, 15 minutes. Mr. Evans, are you introducing, or?
Happy to introduce Mr. Scott Asher. He's a principal with Wilson and Companies, and we're familiar with Mr. Asher. He and Wilson completed our updated master transportation plan, so he's very familiar with Fountain, so we're glad to see him this involved with the Powers Extension, but he's going to take you through the status of it.
Welcome, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. I really do appreciate it.
Oh, we need you to turn it on. We won't turn on the other one, because it'll only give you three minutes.
Gotcha. Again, thank you for having me. Really do appreciate having the invite. I'm actually here on behalf of El Paso County and Howard Schwartz. El Paso County is leading the South Powers Extension PEL study, and he asked me to come present the update, and glad to be here. So, there we go. Good deal. So what we'll do, and let's see. Do I have control? Okay. Just want to make sure. Or not? Ah, there we go. Did that work? I know, that's what I was just trying to... So what we'll do is do a quick project overview of the project, talk about the current schedule, what some of the updates are recently, as well as just some of the communication, and really sort of talk about the project, the planning and environmental linkage study overall. So, is a quick update on the project and just sort of an overview. Wanted to just let people know that the Powers Corridor has been in the planning stages for decades, was really conceived back in, really, the 60s, and really got legs back in the 80s, and has been continuing the connection all around the east side of the metro area. The city of Carrera Springs and CDOT are working as well to finish the connection on the north end, and that's moving forward. And the south connection is really the last piece that is in the works now and moving forward. There was a study done in 2000 for the South Powers Connection originally, and that we've been building upon that process with this current PEL study. One of the, some of the things that we want to get out of the PEL are an access control plan for the corridor in this stretch, a right-of-way preservation plan that really defines what the cord is, where it's going to be, and how much right-of-way is going to be needed for it as it ultimately goes, an implementation and phasing plan. We're also creating a pilot study that's incorporating redundancy and resiliency into the planning environmental linkage process. That's a pilot study that's being sponsored through CDOT, and that's being incorporated into it. And really, one of the big things we want to do is get all the players that are along the corridor on the same page of what the expectations are, whether it's the city of Fountain, city of Carrera Springs, El Paso County, CDOT, and property owners to understand what's going to be going on and what the plan is. Other things that I know you all are very aware of... Ah, come on. Doesn't, does it go to sleep? There we go. Is that there's, you know, a big component of this project is really the connectivity, the military installations in the region. They're a huge component of our economy and of our communities here, and making sure that we have good connectivity between those is a critical importance. And so, this is sort of another piece that comes into play as we started looking at the bigger overall network needs for roadway networks and connections throughout the region. There's a lot of things going on at Fort Carson. There's a lot of connections between Fort Carson and Peterson Air Force Base for deployments and things like that that we're looking at and incorporating into the study as well. But it's just a really big piece of it. So, the current schedule, as we look through some things, we're here in the January 23 timeframe. We started the project just over a year ago with El Paso County getting things moving, starting to look at all the existing conditions, compiling a lot of the data, had a public meeting last spring and late May, and did a lot of meetings with stakeholders prior to those, and have been working through a lot of the technical details over the past several months as we get through the process, developing alternatives and starting to analyze things. We're actually in the process as well as starting to develop the access control plan for the corridor. Can't really finalize that until we have a preferred or recommended alignment for that, but that's what's going to be coming on. And then still shooting for having the PEL document and an access control plan wrapped up by summer of this year. So that's still an aggressive schedule, but something that we're working for, working toward. Some of the communication things, I just want to make sure folks are aware of what some of the communication tools are. We issued a newsletter in early January just to provide an update. We have a robust database of email addresses of folks that have requested to be a part of that, folks that have been part of the process, that have come in, that we provide periodic updates throughout the course of the project. There is a project email address that we encourage folks, if they have questions, submit questions or comments through there, as well as the website. And we have a lot of information on the website that we're trying to, that we're keeping updated and are continuing to update as the process moves forward. So, if you ever have questions, please, you know, reach out through those mediums or through the city staff as well. They know they're part of the process as well as we go through it. So, some of the things that we have going on right now is, you know, really, there's, from a status standpoint, there's been several key things that have happened, and we've been able to accomplish in the project so far. There's, as part of the planning environmental linkage study, there's several points and coordination points that we have to follow and check in with Federal Highway Administration to make sure that they're on board with it. The first one is sort of the reason for the study. Why are we doing this? And that's something that comes early on before a lot of the things start. The big one that we were able to achieve this past fall, right before Thanksgiving, was basically getting the approval on the purpose and need for this project. That's really the laying out, the why are we doing this? What's the purpose of it? And what are all the needs that we're going to try to address with the project and the corridor study? So that was sort of a critical moment, because everything, you know, builds upon that purpose and need. And then the alternative evaluation and documentation is currently underway. Once we get through that, there'll be another coordination point with FHWA that they need to concur on the alternatives, analysis and evaluation, and then the final PEL study report. So, we're well on our way through the process and doing a lot of really, keeping it moving forward. So, the purpose and need, I don't want to read it verbatim, but basically looking at improving the purpose of the project is to recommend alignments that really improves the connectivity between State Highway 16 on the north and I-25 to a new connection point on I-25 on the south. Looking through all that to help implement, well, to improve the connectivity in the network within the region, really, because it's, this is an area that the county and the metro area that is really lacking in network connectivity. The need for it, again, gets into advancing the local and regional mobility for the area, as well as looking at incorporating in multimodal opportunities within the corridors. We see transportation and connectivity changing and the way people move, making sure that we're not precluding things from happening in the future. So those are sort of the needs overall. And then, as we've been going through the past several months now, is looking at the alternatives development phase. And one of the things we wanted to start from is, we've been talking through a lot of this study, and one of the early goals was, we aren't starting from scratch. We're starting from picking up from where other things have started and left off. So, this slide here is showing what the previous alignments were that were considered in the 2000 study. And there were several of them that were looked at, considered, and refined. So we wanted to take a look at those and look at, are there any of those still valid and make sense, and look at what changes? So through that initial study, they did eliminate several alternatives. We've gone back and looked at that and confirmed that, yes, the ones that were eliminated originally did make sense to eliminate, and we were not going to carry those forward. But there were, what, seven or five different alternatives in the original study that were carried forward, and we're still carrying those forward again to take another harder look at those, to see if those make sense. So, as we started looking at developing alternatives, like I said, we want to understand what the previous ones were, but then looking at new developments, new land uses within the study area, what things have changed, what makes a whole lot of sense to start, you know, incorporating into the new data? Because lots happened in the past 20 years down here and in this part of the community and the county. And so with that, we wanted to identify additional alternatives that might still meet the purpose, you know, that meet the purpose and need, and also take into account what we've heard from the stakeholder outreach, from private citizens, what really were those impacts. So, what we developed with that was several new alternatives. The ones in pink are the new alternatives that were, that are being considered currently, as well as the ones in blue that were from the original study that are still in the process and going through the evaluation, going through the evaluation process. Couple of things that you'll see is, we have really four different points of potential connection to I-25. There is one that is just over the county line on the south end that's being considered, and we're taking a hard look at that as well to see if that makes sense or not. But we wanted to look at some different opportunities and different options that are going to look, you know, look at really the connectivity issues and provide the most value. Couple of things you'll also see is, the pink lines and the blue lines sort of deviate on the north end with the alignments that follow the pink between Mesa Ridge Parkway and Squirrel Creek Road, being more in line with what was developed during the transportation master plan with the city of Fountain, and through coordination with what the planned developments in the area were considered to be. One thing I will say is, these are the alternatives right now that are being considered, and we're going through the evaluation process now. We don't have a recommended alternative, but that's what we're working through at this stage, and are hoping to have here in the next couple of months, an alternative and a recommended alignment concept that would be then presented out to the public for feedback and consideration. So that is about 12 months and 15 minutes. Any questions?
I'm impressed, and if you don't have a question, don't worry about it, because that's a lot of information, a lot of terms and a lot of acronyms, and I appreciate you taking the time to say the acronyms, so people can at least hear them one time.
I was trying to make sure I didn't miss any for you, because I know that's hard.
Yes, I know, that's right. Councilmember Corey?
I had a question for you. So you said rail yard, the new rail yard that Fort Carson's thinking about building
could be connected?
What, like, what are they thinking about backing out, or is it just not, it's just preliminary talks, or?
I just know, we know that they're looking at the rail connections that are sort of tied as well to, I believe, the planned rail park that is being considered just north of the Ray Nixon Power Plant. So that is something that is being considered as we look at some of those connections, and could provide if, like, if Powers ended in that general vicinity, it could provide an alternative access into Gate 19, aside from just Charter Road, Grand Road.
Okay, that's all I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay.
I do love my new roundabout at Charter Road, Grand Road. I live away that way, so I love it. Yes, it's a good roundabout. If you haven't driven it, come or drive the roundabout. All right. Any otherbody else have any questions on this update? And I appreciate you doing it very quickly. You have updates, you think about something afterwards. Todd be your person to give a call to, and he can probably get it explained, so.
Thank you so much.
Are there any questions from anybody in the audience, real quick? You need to come up to the microphone, identify yourself, please? Okay. All right, thank you. Just to answer your question, his question was, how much is it going to cost? There aren't any costs associated yet. This is just plans on paper right now and ideas.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. We'll be working through that later.
Lots more work, but you got to start with an idea where you're going first.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right. All right, that takes us on to item 4.2, Board, Commission, and Committee Appointments. We have none tonight. So on to item 5, City Council Agenda Requests. City councils shall use this, use this time to request any items for future consideration. I'm going to start on my left tonight. Mr. Rick?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Corrie?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
And Councilmember Duncan?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you very much. I'm going on to item 6, Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. So we have the light up there, so if you come up to say something, you'll be green, and when it's red, you're done. All right, first card I have tonight is from Andrew Vander...
Vanderweg.
Vanderweg. Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, council. I'm really here mainly just kind of as an introduction. My name is Andrew Vanderweg. My wife, Arianne, and my daughter, Miley, and I moved to Fountain just about two years ago, so as of February. My daughter's a proud Trojan, attending Fountain Middle School, and so we moved on to the property, property on Link Road, which a lot of people previously know is like the We Wonders Miniatures, or the Pony Ranch, who was owned by a couple, Gerald and Susan Powell, and we've really enjoyed being here. We're super excited. We actually just purchased the property to the south of us next door and moved my father-in-law down from Denver, so he's living next door, which is amazing for him, because he gets to spend lots of time with his granddaughter, and so we've enjoyed that, too. My wife and I are small business owners, entrepreneurs. We operate businesses in the Pikes Peak region. We had the opportunity in November to present to your Economic Development Committee, and so I'm here tonight. I was talking with Kimberly. It sounds like notes from that meeting, and our presentation will be available to you guys in February. So I would just ask that you take a chance to kind of look through that. That'll give you kind of a preliminary idea of kind of what we're hoping to do here in Fountain for the Fountain community. We are in a development process with the city, so we've been working with city staff, and, you know, we, my wife and I, we work in kind of the youth space, and then we're also, you know, small, sustainable farmers. So we really look forward to the opportunity to address a couple of the strategic priorities that this city has set, which is expanded opportunities for youth and also the access to good, healthy food for our community. So that's all I have for tonight, so thank you guys for giving me a few minutes to come up and introduce myself.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, the second card I have does not have a last name. It just says Scott. So Scott, could please come up and introduce yourself and state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my, my name is Scott.
Your last name, please?
That's it, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Here, I'm here to address today, first, I have a question. What is the city's DUNES number? Or that'd be the UEI number, I believe, if it's updated?
I'm sorry?
What's the city's DUNES number? Or the UEI number? And then, secondly, what's the police department's DUNES number or UEI number?
I have those numbers, but why would you need those numbers?
John, could you please turn your microphone on?
Sorry, John Lewis, Finance Director for the city of Fountain. I have those numbers in a file. I'm just curious as to why you need those numbers? Those numbers we need in order to get into government contract work with the city?
Yes.
So, are you looking to contract?
No.
With the government? Okay.
I just want to know the numbers, so I can have it for litigation purposes.
You would do a, you would do a cora request through the city clerk's office for that?
Okay. Okay, my next question, are you guys familiar with Prune Yard Shopping Center versus Robbins? And if you could, could you bring that up for me?
I'm sorry, I don't have anything.
Prune Yard Shopping Center versus Robbins?
Okay, well, our IT staff doesn't just pull stuff up. Does that something you gave to them ahead of time?
No problem.
Did you, did you plan that?
The Prune Yard's...
Did you give them that ahead of time?
Yeah, I did talk to them right before, but he said he couldn't do it because the computer wasn't working.
I'm sorry, hang on just a second. IT, could you turn your mic on, please?
Certainly. Yeah, the request was made right at the beginning of the meeting, and unfortunately, we were dealing with technical issues with the equipment and were unable to search for that information at that time.
Okay, so they haven't had time to pull it up? If you could give us just a, you only have three minutes, so...
Yeah, no problem. Prune Yard Shopping Center, just to give a quick rundown, is a case where you can't, you can't constitutionally trespass anybody for trespassing on, it was a multi-center shopping center, so like Walmart or Walgreens, stuff like that, if you're in the act of a constitutionally protected activity. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, my next thing is, I need jurisdictional approval for a cannabis delivery company. And that's why I brought up that, the Prune Yard Shopping Center.
Okay, well, that is something you would need to talk to Mr. Evans about after the meeting. That isn't a question that we can answer tonight, so I'm sure Mr. Evans will be happy to get with you, but, yeah.
Scott. No problem. That's Mr. Evans' right, just so you know.
Right there, no problem. Okay, cannabis delivery company, since we can't talk about anything else. Make sure I cover everything. That's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the next card is from Connie Weisert. I'm sorry. I've seen your name on Facebook, I'm just, okay. And it says you'd like to speak about homeless encampments.
Pardon me?
Homeless, you wrote on here homeless encampment?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Good evening, council. My name is Connie Weisenhent, and I would like to have permission to approach the council and hand out some flyers really quick, if that's okay?
If you give them the city clerk, she'll pass them down, and then you can keep going at the same time.
So there's enough for everybody, and maybe for a few, drop it this way.
Sylvia, is the light going? Okay, I just can't see it from this angle anymore. Okay, thank you.
So, I'm the owner and operator of Connie's cupboard at 594 South Santa Fe Avenue, and last Thursday, it was brought to my attention that two homeless encampments were discovered on the property directly behind my store. The address for that parcel is 600 South Santa Fe Avenue. I did walk down and viewed the two encampments, and it was a hot mess, to put it lightly. Being a good neighbor that I am, I did speak with the homeless gentleman, and he spent the entire day of Friday doing his part in the snow, and I respected it very much. I did put out a call for help to the community on Facebook, and I received 11 volunteers plus myself. That property is completely cleaned, down to the dirt. It looks like nothing was ever there, and we did a phenomenal job. My question to the council is that I don't know if I'm always going to have the capacity to, to be approached and clean up every homeless encampment, because I'm guilty by association, because I have a heart and a passion for the homeless folks. The property owner on that property at 600 South Santa Fe is a Ma Kwa Hng, and I believe he's located in Los Angeles, California. I would like to approach the council and the city for help in reaching out to that property owner to say, can you please fence in the area or put some private property notices in that area? I am a good neighbor, and I will always do my part to maintain my commitment to the city, but I need a little bit of help. Please and thank you.
Okay, I'm sure that's something Scott can deal and then code enforcement.
Just want to clarify, that wasn't your, the 600 South Santa Fe, that was the neighboring property. That's where the encampments were. Yeah, we can, we'll reach out on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone from the audience that did not turn in a card that would like to address the council tonight? IT, do we have anyone online tonight?
No one tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close Public to Be Heard. Take us on to item 7, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have items A and B on the consent agenda. What would the council like to do? Councilmember Corey?
Move we approve item 7A and 7B for our consent agenda.
Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for items 7A and B. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Okay, that takes us, takes us to item 8, Old Business. There is none. Item 9, New Business. Item 9A, Consideration of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. There were none. Item 9B, Resolution 23-003, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the Infill Number Two Infrastructure Tax Sharing Agreement for Commercial 21 A C S E C. Ms. Bailey?
Glad to be with you tonight. Thank you for a few minutes of your time. Thank you for reading the headlines of the resolution that is placed before you, 23-003, on behalf of Tax Sharing Agreement Number Two, for the southeast corner. That's what SEC represents within the infill area. I'd like to do a little bit backdating to get you where we are today real quick, because we do have new council members that weren't with us in 2018. So at that time, economic development worked with utilities, as well as some of our landowners in the quadrant, and defined the infill area, which is south of Mesa Ridge Parkway, north of a Comanche Village, east of 8587. So in that pocket area is about 367 acres of commercial development. We've had a lot of interest. What we have is a severe lack of infrastructure in that nexus, which keeps letting projects really not come to fruition on behalf of our community. So in 2018, we defined the infill area, and then in August of 2020, you actually did adopt, at that council and the mayor at that time, did adopt Tax Sharing Agreement Number One. And what that has transpired into is what you see today is the Maverick, the Quick Quack, the Dutch Brothers, and the Tire Store. So those were lots, one through four, that were supported under that tax sharing agreement. We knew at the time, when we did support at least that private endeavor from a tax sharing basis for off-site improvements, we were helping to fill the gap of deficient infrastructure. And in 2018, when we did define the infill area, we did put pen to paper at $2.7 million, lack of infrastructure improvements needed to support commercial development in that vicinity. That does not include the off-site requirements of CDOT regarding Mesa Ridge Parkway and traffic congestion needs and public safety of that corridor. So with that said, as well as September of '22, last year, I presented to you the incentive So with that said, as well as September of '22, last year, I presented to you the incentive policy for the city. And some of the things that we did identify in that recommendation is that it is a conditional rebate instrument, that's what incentives really are defined as, which means a store or a business must perform, meet those expectations to receive any of the rebates or reimbursements off of an incentive policy with the city, or Urban Renewal, or any other agencies such as El Paso County that may support an incentive. In addition, it is Tabor exempt, so once you harbor a project under an incentive agreement, all those new revenue streams that are projected, the city actually keeps and harbors those funds on behalf of needs of its general revenue fund. Without that safeguard, your new revenues do not populate within the community, they float up to the state. So it's in our best interest if we can recommend that. So I just wanted to give you a little backstory to where we are today, okay? So where we are today is your Resolution 23-003, it is supporting and recommending a Tax Sharing Agreement Number Two on behalf of 21 acres in the southeast corner to support an anchor grocer, as well as six out parcels for development in that vicinity. The anchor grocer is absorbing 100% of the off-site CDOT improvements for both itself of that 21 acres, but also, what you have also heard about across the street is the UC Health Facility Campus that has been mentioned also in our community. So UC Health has no revenue streams, it's strictly a service provider. And if you recollect from the incentive policy, programs are established off of performance basis. So it has to create sales tax revenue, has to create property tax revenue, and then there's the ancillary use tax revenue. Those are the mechanisms that help support incentive agreements. So in this case, we are sharing two wins based on this incentive agreement. If you do support the recommendation put forth, you actually will get your anchor development plus ancillary retail, plus you gain your UC Medical Health Campus that has been mentioned as well. So, right now, those off-site CDOT improvements are hovering around $3.2 million. That is strictly to handle the traffic congestion, the public safety issues of that corridor, as well as significant drainage improvements that have to happen as well. In addition to that, the recommendation under this TSA is a 10-year commitment of those to-be-born revenue streams off of this private development operation. And then you, the Urban Renewal Authority has also come in and helped support the gap of need. They have pledged, based on your approval tonight, they have pledged to put back their use tax, as well as a third of their tax revenue sharing as well, to make sure we cover a lot of those gaps and costs of need of those offsites. So with that said, you also had a Economic Development Commission letter of support in your materials packet put forth. If you recollect, in March of '22, a citizens group did come forward explaining the need of the grocer. Today, in our community market, we have a 42 million leakage report study by our retail consultant showing that the excess of need is not being met in our community. So this project would significantly support those broader needs as well. So with that, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Rick?
Two questions, just want to make sure the public is aware. How does disagreement compare to what we gave to South Academy Highlands, specifically Walmart, Sam's, all those companies up there? And then the second question would be, if someone comes in, not in this area, but down south, would they be able to get similar tax breaks? Not, not necessarily dollar for dollar, but similar percentages?
Sure, so just question one, and then we'll go to question number two. So your first question was regarding how is it similar or dissimilar to South Academy Highlands? South Academy Highlands is a much different product. So in that genre, you committed to a 32-year bond, I believe, under the Urban Renewal Authority. So the city wasn't obligated under that particular agreement, but the Urban Renewal and the city have a cost-sharing agreement among them as well at that time. So the Urban Renewal Authority is actually the issuer of those bonds. You have a 30-year clock to pay off those bonds. Once they are fully paid, then everything, the proceeds then start to flow back to the city. It's a much bigger elephant, I would say, from a dollar perspective-wise of what was pledged, so a much different model and a much different correlation of partners in that mix of commitments. Your second question is if it happens, something happens to populate in the southern end of our community. So in this, where we sit for City Hall, is considered the southern end, it's the Old Town District. There is a district boundary in this vicinity, and there's actually also an urban renewal area in this vicinity. So if a business happens to land in that boundary nexus, it could gravitate the maxitude of incentive programs available. If you happen to lie outside of that jurisdiction, you will lose about half of those incentives to help you, you know, develop and create jobs and revenue streams for the community. I hope that answers your question.
It did, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further questions from council? Are there any questions from anyone in the audience, or do we have the applicant here?
Yes, your applicant is here, Evergreen Development Corp., Russ Perkins is in the back of the room. If you happen to have any questions for him, he would be glad to address.
I just didn't know if he wanted to come up and say anything or not.
No, he's a spectator unless in need.
Okay, well, this is something that has at least been 10 years in the making, and, you know, people talking about it and different things and getting everything in line. So I am so excited that this is finally on the table.
I have to say, your staff, your city staff, which is beyond the face in front of you tonight, it's been a 16-month endeavor to bring this project to fruition to this community. So as I explained in the incentive policy, economic development is a marathon, and that's being generous. Sometimes it takes much longer than a marathon.
I remember years ago digging up 85 and laying like sewer lines and stuff to go up to that area that someday, something like this, you know, might come in preparation.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been a long time working here, so thank you so much. All right, if there are any further questions from council? If not, what would council like to do with this item? Councilmember Applegate?
I recommend the approval of Resolution 23-003, Infill Infrastructure Tax Sharing Agreement, SEC.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution 23-003, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, excited to see some dirt moving, getting on, going on up there, thank you. All right, that takes us on to item nine C, a resolution to amend the Fountain City, Fountain Youth Council Charter. Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. What you have before you is a resolution to really update the current charter that we have, that we adopted a few years ago. I've specifically laid out, just in those bullet points in the agenda commentary, in that background information, the changes, but I've also redlined that resolution so that you can see that. The modifications are to change, currently change the ages from 14, the eligibility age from 14 to 13. That allows us one additional year to get kids getting involved with that program, but it's a great program. When we did that, we also added a fifth year in the, the language of the, the eligibility, of being able to run for, or participate for five to, five years as opposed to four. Clarifies the role of our council member, whoever that ends up being, currently it's Councilmember Duncan, but down the road, whoever that ends up being, clarifies their role as the advisor, what that means. Expands the ability that the youth council to create additional officer positions as needed. That's one of the things with these groups like this, they, we, we adopted this with sort of the typical officer positions. They decided, hey, you know, we'd really like to have a communications position, so we've included that. But then we thought, you know, why don't we open that up and create some ability to create additional officer positions down the road so we can provide some leadership opportunities for kids, if, if there's a need that comes up. Let's see, we put together a basic communication policy, that's been a policy that they've created sort of ad hoc, and we just want to really be careful that we're, we're pretty strict with the communications policy to protect, protect the adults and the youth that are involved with communications with the group. And then finally, we included a basic code of conduct relative to how members are expected to treat each other, and members of the public. Any questions for me on any of the items in that resolution? Anything I missed, Councilmember Duncan? Okay, just double checking, thank you.
Okay, seeing no questions, what would council like to do with Resolution 23-004? Councilmember Duncan?
I move to approve Resolution Number 23-004, a resolution to amend the Fountain Youth Council Charter.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution 23-004, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Takes us on to item nine D, Resolution 23-005, a resolution of the Fountain, of the City of Fountain, establishing the city's position not to collect or enforce retail bag fees created by Colorado House Bill 21-1162. Mr. Johnson, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and council, thank you, welcome back. So I, I'm presenting this resolution for the council this evening. As, as we all know probably by this point, the state has begun its mandatory bag fee at, at large retailers in the state of Colorado. And so if you go to a large retailer, you will be charged with 10 cents to purchase a plastic bag. As opposed to, a month ago, they would give out bags for free. And so the, the state legislature enacted this House bill mandating bag collection fees at these retailers. If you have three or more locations within the state of Colorado, you are defined as a large retailer and required to charge this fee. And then according to that legislation, you are also required to remit 60% of that fee collected to the local municipality or the local county. This is really, what I would, what I would characterize as an unprecedented action by the state, because they are not, they are, created the fee but are not collecting the fee. They have delegated that, or, or more accurately, forced the local municipalities to be the collection and enforcement end of that fee. Most municipalities throughout the state are happy to collect it, have an avenue for that collection via sales tax. And so we find ourselves, as a City of Fountain, in a unique position. We don't self-collect tax, and so there's no real automatic or easy way of them, those retailers, remitting that fee to us. And so it, it naturally begs the question, should we collect that fee? And more accurately, should we spend taxpayer dollars to collect that fee? The idea would be that, that the collection of the fee could pay for itself, but all the same, it's, it's the state mandating that we do something. And there's no real guarantee what we're going to collect. As many of you know, like, stores like Walmart aren't even offering bags at all. And so it's hard to estimate, really impossible to estimate, how much, number one, that would cost us to stand up a program to collect the fee. You know, there's, there's finance and accounting costs associated with it, staff time associated with it, right? We'd have to probably create a fund and, and manage those funds and account for those funds, and they are, they are restricted funds. And so we'd have to make sure and, and that those funds are being spent on what they were earmarked for. We'd also, there'd also probably have to be an enforcement of that, of that fee. And so I think, you know, all, all cities are doing it a little bit differently, right? Making sure that, that those retailers aren't just pocketing that 60%, right? Somebody has to be watching, and the state has required us to be that, that entity. So we, we have sort of a long range of options. And the way that the resolution is being written before you is, is to simply say that we will not be participating in collection of that fee. That's, that's one end of the spectrum that we would communicate to those retailers, that, that we are choosing as municipality, which we have home rule authority to do, that we are not participating in, in their fee. And I am not aware of any city that's done that in the state of Colorado. But, but the reason that I brought it to the council is because I've, I communicated with CML, Colorado Municipal League, and, and they support this position if any city were to take it. You know, and, and then it, and it kind of goes a long range of options, right? On the other end of the spectrum is we could require a fee more than 10 cents if we chose to. That, that we have the authority to, to require retailers to, to charge more than that. And so, and sort of some options in between, if, if the council wanted to consider those. But I wanted to bring that to the council, I know there was some, some, some questions about it, and I will tell you, I'm not sure I see or saw any here, but we did do our best to reach out to local businesses with the help of the city clerk's office. We got a list about, I want to say about 20 businesses in the City of Fountain that this applies to, and, and did our best to reach out, whether some, some were just general email addresses, and, and we went and knocked on some doors as well to try to get people or retailers that this would apply to here tonight. I don't see any here, to see what their opinion on it is. Because those retailers are probably under the assumption that they have to impose this fee, and it have been probably for the last few weeks. And so this, this creates some questions for them, if you were to prove this resolution is written, you know, about, you know, what, what they have to do, and, and the response is, you know, I think, regardless, they can do what they need to do, they can sell bags at that price if they choose to. But if and when they try to give us our, our 60%, we won't accept it or we'll give it back to them. And, and so the resolution is, is stating the city's official position as that, unless, obviously, I hear differently from, from you all. So it's really a policy decision, that long range of options are legally defensible. And so it's, it's kind of up to the council if, if you'd like to discuss or hear from the public or anything. And I'm here to answer questions about kind of how that looks like, because it is a little bit of a controversial position. But anything I can do to help make a decision, I'm here for.
I see you're like, Councilmember Rick, hang on just one second.
Sure, no problem.
What this will not do is force retailers to give the bags away for free. I just want to make that, make sure everybody understands that that's listening.
Right, they, they could.
They can choose what they want to do, and we still would recommend people bringing in their own bags and, and using them, you know, just to really help the environment and the bags blowing around and everything.
Right, and, and so, you know, it really puts it back in the, in the, in the free market, right? If, if the, if the businesses want to choose to sell those bags, like they are probably at every other store in the state now, to be consistent, they can choose to do that, but it won't be because we're, we're forcing them to.
Right, so they don't need to put up signs that say the city is mandating we do this?
That's correct.
Councilmember Rick?
Two questions, first for Mr. Lewis. I want to make sure everybody understands, we don't collect sales tax here in the City of Fountain.
That is correct, the state collects it for us.
Right, and in this bill, in this tax, they are changing that to where we collect the six cents, correct?
Correct.
Okay, second question, which would be for Mr. Lewis and Ms. Huffman, since you deal with licensing and taxing. You currently do not have staffing to go around and collect the six cents tax, account for it all, process it all, under your current budget. You, do, do you or don't you have the staff to do this?
We do not have the staff or the budget for that.
Neither does the city clerk's office, unfortunately.
Okay. I'm sorry, one more question, Mr. Trainer? You have no way of estimating how much money this is going to be able to pull in, is that correct?
We've tried to, and I've tried, I've reached out to other cities to find out how they're doing it, and they don't have a good answer for that either, they're just going to get what they get and spend it.
Okay, for the, for the public, we, we would have to hire somebody to do this, and we don't know if the tax is going to bring in enough money to cover that position. So I cannot support the state, and I will be supporting Mr. Johnson's position, thank you.
This is truly a home rule issue, right? The, the state is coming down and saying... The state is coming down and saying that we're going to tell you what to do within your home rule authority, and that's our stance is that you're not. This is an unfunded mandate you've sent down to us, and it's not about bags. It's about, really about the principle of home rule authority and the state trying to overstep their bounds.
Yeah, I think that's 100% correct. I think if you had the representatives from the state that passed this, they would say it's not an unfunded mandate because it's paid for with itself, right? But it is, but it is a mandate from the state that I believe is in conflict with our home rule, our home rule authority. And so the reality is, it's going to have no, your decision tonight really has no impact environmentally. It's not going to change much, if anything, about the bags that get given out, right? It's just a statement to our community that, you know, we could save them six cents on the bag, and that we don't need their six cents in this area, just so it can pay for itself. And that's the cost of responding to the state that we're going to stand up for our home rule authority.
And the other four cents is kept by the store, is that correct?
Would be kept by the store. So, I mean, again, our share is six cents, right? So I don't know what the, if the stores would continue then to sell bags for four cents a bag, would be the part of the fee that they would collect, they would keep. Again, it would be up to the store what they would choose to do. But the six cents, the 60% is our share.
Right. Okay. So any further discussion or questions? I have, oh, I don't see, I'm sorry. Councilmember Estes.
And so it's clear for the public and everyone here, this is for 2023, because as of 2024, the rules change again, and there's no bags allowed, period.
Right, that's a great.
Except for your reusable that you take.
Yeah, and technically in the bill, that you can, there's a mandated 10 cents for cardboard or paper bags as well. But what we're seeing in the market, in the free market, nobody has paper bags. They're all going to those recycled, you know, 75-cent bags. So this really is a 2023 issue, because it's, come 2024, it'll be sort of irrelevant.
Right, but in 2024, they can charge for the paper bags.
For the paper bags, that's correct.
And we're not going to collect for that either.
That would be correct.
Do we have to have come back and do that again, or?
No, it's written in perpetuity for both.
All right. Okay, is there any questions from the public?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one member of the public from the Internet by the name of Sam that has a question.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take that one first, and then we'll go to the question. I have two hands in the room also.
I'm sorry, Sam, we're having difficulties hearing you in the room. Let me see if I can fix that for you here real quick.
Okay, why don't we go ahead while you fiddle around with that? And Mr. Couch, you had a question or comment?
Your old couch. I'm in agreement with this is the wrong way to do this, but I would like to say that I live on the south end of the city, and there is an extreme amount of plastic bags that I dry out of my trees every week. I would be happy if something changed, whether it's mandated or whether it's just good stewardship, but I would like to see something happen. It's not, I'm not saying, I think it's disproportionately put on, I've seen people try to get away from having to pay the 10 cents a bag down at Walmart, and they got, they're coming out with armloads of stuff trying to transport it. I even ended up with a couple of Walmart shopping baskets all the way down at my property that I loaded up and hauled back. So if getting shopping baskets in lieu of plastic bags is the answer, I'm not for that either, but I'd like to see something that is well thought out, but not necessarily this plan. This doesn't, letting the state run over us is not the answer.
Right. Thank you. Okay, Connie? Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I have a question.
Wait till you get to the mic.
I have a question, and then maybe just like a thought to share. So my question is, what happens to the money that's already been collected going into the 24th day? And then my thought is, maybe we could just suggest, since it's just here in Fountain, that those monies go to a charity somewhere here in town.
We can't make up what it's used for. The state is very specific what the money can and can't be used for.
Okay.
Yeah. Troy, you want to take the first part of the question?
Sure. And that's a really good question, that's the best question, and it's difficult to answer, because it's almost, and again, that's, you know, I guess everything that I'll say is blame, I'll point my finger at the state, because it's an, I don't know what they'll do with it, that money. That I think it was mandated without authorization and potentially unconstitutionally. And so those businesses are going to have to make a decision about what to do with it, but if you pass this resolution, we won't accept it. So that'll be up to the businesses what they could do with it. And, you know, I think that would certainly be a justifiable position if they were to donate it, but that's not for us to say.
Okay. Did we, we have one more person in the room, and then we'll come back to see if you have connectivity online. Did you want to come up to the microphone and say something?
Yeah, I have a question.
State your name again, please.
My name is Scott. Did that initiative, did that pass the ballot? Did that go to the ballot? So the people that voted on it, so how is that not affected by Tabor?
It's a fee. They named it a fee.
He just said it was a tax.
I think he just made an error, yeah.
No, but you're exactly right, that they called, they call it a fee. And so, you know, the people that were against it in the State House, that was their argument, that it wasn't a fee, that it was a tax. Many municipalities, in fact, an interesting tidbit, have opted out, because what's unclear about the fee is whether or not it's taxable. And so, and so many cities are opting out of the, what they've been dubbing as a double tax. And so the 10 cents, the question has been, it was ambiguous in the bills, whether or not the 10 cents should be taxed. So say you get 10 bags, what do you pay tax on that dollar? And so many cities are choosing to opt out of that, because that's exactly what it was defined as, it's a double tax. And so, you know, that's certainly a good question, and I can't answer because I'm not the state, but.
Okay. How are we doing with Sam online?
I think we have that addressed now. Sam, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Sam Fortune.
Sam Fortune, I believe he said. Okay.
Yep. So I didn't even know you guys were even discussing this tonight. Hell, my wife's a business owner here in town. So that's a new one. I'm kind of glad I tuned in tonight for this. But, you know, I tried reaching out to the state about this, how this was supposed to work with this 10 cents on the plastic bags. They don't even have a clue.
Right. That's because they made a mistake in their bill also, that they have to collect it for a year and a half before they have to remit any of it, because they made a date mistake in the bill in their effort to get it through so quickly.
What I understand on this, for the first year, we collect the 10 cents, but we don't actually have to give it up to the state for the first year.
Well, you only have to collect it if you have more than three locations in the state. Is that correct, Troy?
That's correct.
So if you only have one business location in town, you don't, you shouldn't even be collecting it.
Oh, trust me, I'm not. I wouldn't collect it to begin with. I think this whole thing is a farce.
So I take it you would ask us to support this resolution?
Yes, very much so.
Okay.
And I hope that you guys actually get on the larger businesses, if you do pass this resolution, to not be doing it as well. Home Depot, or not Home Depot, but Lowe's, Walmart, Sam's Club, they're the biggest abusers.
I'm sure there's a process where the city clerk or the city attorney will be contacting them and letting them know?
Yes.
Okay.
And we tried to reach out to the biggest ones that we thought fit the definition, and, you know, some of the contact information we didn't have was great, but we did our, certainly did our best to reach out to those, certainly the big ones, the Walmart and Lowe's, Safeway, those are, and then the other ones as well. And so there were some questions from them, but every response was, we'll come to the meeting and ask your questions and give your input. And obviously, that didn't move the needle for any of them enough, so. But so if the Council were to pass this, we would then make sure to overcommunicate the city's position regarding this, and so they're not surprised when we send their checks back.
Any further questions or comments from anybody? If not, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Applegate?
I move to approve Resolution 23-005.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Resolution 23-005. Are there any further discussion? If not, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Thank you very much. That takes us on to item E, Resolution 23-006, a resolution affirming and approving the public safety mill levy for fiscal year FY 2023. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. This is John Lewis. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Fountain. And as you are aware, you approved our budget, an ordinance number 1780, back on November 15th of 2022. And in that ordinance, we included your affirmation and approval of the mill levies for the General Fund and the Heritage Special Improvement District. Well, as you are aware, the voters have approved an additional mill levy for public safety of 6.1 mills. However, the certification of the elections was not until November 29th, so it was after your approval of the 2023 budget. Therefore, we are recommending your formal affirmation and approval of that 6.10 mill levy that was approved by your citizens. And if you do approve it and affirm it, then we will add it to the revenue of the 2023 budget and in accordance with our financial policies, and it'll be included in the budget that we send to the state according to state regulations. So with that, I would ask for you to approve Resolution 23-006.
Okay, is there any questions from any of the council members? Are there any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 23-006, a resolution affirming and approving the public safety mill levy for fiscal year FY 2023.
Thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on Resolution number 23-006. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Thank you. Right, that takes us on to item F, Resolution number 23-007, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado authorized the leasing of two Mack trucks through Holman Capital and acquired with fiscal year FY 2023 budgeted funds. Mr. Lewis, you're up again.
I'm up again. Also, in the ordinance 1780, where you approved the budget back on November 15th, 2022, we had included $83,000 for snowplows and sanders, as well as a lease payment for two Mack trucks that were going to replace two old trucks of 15 to 20 years old that were being held by the Streets Department. And due to the recent changes in interest rates, the initial leasing agreement was changed by the lessor. So we therefore put it out to bid and found that we could get better lease terms through Holman Capital. And they will provide a five-year reimbursement lease with a 4% lease. So these lease payments have approximately $44,500, will be due semi-annually beginning in August of this year. And this year's lease payment, as I mentioned, is already budgeted, as well as the $83,000 for the snowplows and sanders that will go with it. So this is a request now for us to sign the contract for the initial purchase of the Mack trucks, which will be $390,000. And then we will get reimbursed for that through the lease from Holman Capital. And that initial purchase then will be added to the budget as well as the reimbursement, the revenue from the reimbursement, the lease proceeds. So with that, I would like to request that you approve Resolution 23-007, so that we can purchase the trucks, get reimbursed from them, and also sign the lease with Holman Capital.
I appreciate you going out and finding out about our lease, thank you.
You bet.
Does council have any questions? Does anyone in the audience have any questions? All right, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Applegate?
Move to approve Resolution number 23-007.
Thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Resolution number 23-007. Please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. All right, that takes us on to item G, Resolution number 23-008, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the reimbursement of a portion of the December 2022 Pierce Ladder Truck purchase through a lease through Holman Capital. Mr. Lewis?
Yes. I'm still here. Again, you adopted the budget on November 15th of 2022, the budget for 2023, and it included the costs that had been carried forward of the ladder truck that, as you discussed on December 13th council meeting, was probably not adequate for the city, because it only had a 75-foot ladder. It was already a year late. And so the decision was made that if the fire chief found that another truck, specifically the Pierce Ladder Truck, that was slightly used in Missouri, where they had a lot of hills, and it wasn't working for them, but we don't have those kind of hills, if it was appropriate to purchase it, and it was a good buy, to go ahead and jump on it. So we did. We purchased it for $1.4 million, actually $1,425, and frankly, it was a really good deal. And you had asked that time of me, gee, do we have the money for it? And yes, we did. We also had planned on reimbursing ourselves $1 million of that through a lease. So again, through the bids that we found, the best one we found was a 10-year lease from, again, Holman Capital, this for 4.07%. So this is a request for your approval to sign the lease contract with Holman Capital to get reimbursed for $1 million of the cost of that ladder truck. It'll be paid over 10 years, and we're recommending the lease of the ladder truck be approved and that the 2023 budget be amended to include the lease payment of this year of approximately
Okay, is there any questions from council? Is there any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve Resolution number 23-008.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
We have a motion and a second on Resolution number 23-008. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. You guys know how I know there's no further discussion, because you all got your. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you, council.
All right. All righty. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Lewis. No more? Three's your limit? All right, thank you. That takes us on to correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports. Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything for that.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Johnson? Chief, or camp commander?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Lewis, anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
I think Christine left. IT?
Nothing today, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Nothing for me either, thank you.
Wow, everybody wants to go home. Councilmember Rick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Connie, I want to say thank you for coming in and bringing this issue about the cleanup to us, and thank you for taking care of the area on your own, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Corey?
I guess shout out to Sam Fortune, thanks for coming in and talking to us about the bag fee and just taking your opinion, so it's good to know, it's good to hear input from the citizens, so, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Hinton?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple things. First, I want to thank yourself and our city manager for coming out at our Housing Authority Meeting last week that we met at Greedy Manor. I thought it was a fruitful meeting. I thought that the, the residents there had some insightful questions and just thoughtful questions about their concerns living in that, in that property. So thank you for, for doing that and, and coming out. And also, I had the opportunity to sit down with a member of the VFW post here, and he mentioned that there are two scholarships that were gone un, I guess, awarded here in, in the City of Fountain, and none of our kids either applied for it or received any, one was for $30,000, and the other one is for $5,000 for the middle school. So I told him I would make an announcement. One is, is Democracy Scholarship, and it's the Voice of Democracy Scholarship, that's the one that's for 30,000. You don't have to be a veteran to apply for that, or be a veteran dependent to apply for that, and the other one was the Patriot PIN program, and, and they come with a lot of benefits. It's, it's an essay, it's, it's writing an essay and applying for it, and we have good opportunities for our kids to apply for that. And then I told him I would just make that announcement, then, and we reach out to somebody at the high school so that they're aware of this as well, and at the middle school so that they're aware of this too as well. That, that's a, that's a lot of money. And so it's a, it's a good opportunity for, for anybody in our city, our youth, to, to apply for that, and, and I think they have a good chance of getting it, so.
Yeah, and so did we get them the right contact info for the high school?
I, I have not forwarded his contact information yet, I just had it, and I wanted to make an announcement tonight, but I, I will get with Scott and get plenty of contact, and, and I'll forward his information on to the high school.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Councilmember, you had your light on, and then it's off, are you okay? Okay. Councilmember Estes?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, as I mentioned last time we met about ESA, and they're gonna disband, they will be disbanding, and they have a final meeting in February for dispersal of funds and operating, now any funds left over in the grant mission, which won't be very much, will be split between El Paso County and Fountain. And any grants after this will have to go through the state. I'm sure you all know how to do that. And Regional Building gave their year-end report for the year 2022. Single-family housing was down 27% in 2022. Multifamily was up just a, a slight little bit. And I'd like to thank the staff for searching out better ways to spend our money and finding those four-point, you know, loans that we get. That was good work, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan?
Just a couple of things we want to talk about next month, February of 2023, that those receiving SNAP benefits will be going down. So I assume there will be a, a great need in our community, so, you know, as we were talking about those companies giving donations to those who may be in need, I'm asking for those who are in our community to be aware that we may have an increased need. It's gonna be a great economic impact on our communities when these funds are decreased. You know, we've had, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna get into the government funding and how they're spending money and blah, 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 but we know that food has gone up, and it's going to impact families here in Fountain, and we're going to need some assistance with care and share and donations. So I'm asking if you can to please donate so that we can help with the need that's gonna be coming up in the next couple of weeks. We had a city council retreat this past weekend, and we had a lot of great updates to where we are with our strategic plan, and grateful for Trilch and keeping us, where, you know, keeping us in the know of where we are. We do have a booklet, I, I think, I don't know where we keep those, but if someone would like to get a copy of that, we have those in City Hall, or if you want to, they are online, correctly.
Yes.
They're online.
And there's, there should be some right at the back of the room, too.
Okay. Yeah, so a lot of legislative stuff, I haven't been on one call that doesn't mention anything that's going on with all the legislative things that are coming down, so be aware of those. Also, last week had a very busy weekend honoring the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and grateful to New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church here in Fountain that is continuing that tradition. They did an awesome job with that event, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Just to kind of dovetail on you, on what you said, did talk to somebody from WIC last week. A lot of people think of WIC as just being for like pregnant moms or new moms. WIC actually services families with children under five. We do have a WIC office here in town, we have a bus stop to the WIC office, and I've talked with Todd about seeing if there's a way to potentially see about free buses, and he's gonna reach out to them for people going to that office for an appointment, so they don't have to drag all the way uptown. It takes two weeks, they said, from the time you apply for WIC benefits. By state law, within 15 days, they have to have contacted you and had your appointment to so that, to see if you qualify for that program or not. So there's an outreach thing. And then Colorado Health Center South, I believe this Friday and next Friday is having an event, I want to say from 10 to 2, I know I posted on my Facebook page. The, the flyer isn't real good, because all it talks about is vaccinations, but if you read the fine print, it talks about they're gonna have some groups there to help you if you need to connect with food, mental health services, and just a variety of other things in that county south office there by Walmart. So there is some stuff going on in the community, because I think everybody's really aware of those SNAP benefits, which were temporarily increased, are going back down, so, so we're, I think there's a lot of groups really working on it right now. So that's, that's pretty much all I have to share, and unless, anybody from staff? City, or executive session, Sylvia? Okay, I declare this meeting adjourned.